Welcome to the August 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
If anyone has looked at the minutes of the July meeting and has any comments, we should hear them now or otherwise make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, approved. First item on the agenda, I believe, is the ordinance rewrite, the wireless ordinance rewrite. And I just, I would like to put this in a place and time right now to let everyone know what we're up to. In July, the Planning Commission was presented with a rewritten ordinance and a PowerPoint presentation explaining the ins and outs of that ordinance by Mike Roberts of the Cohen Law Firm, who's with us remotely tonight. When we, at the end of that, before, as we ended that meeting, the next step for us was to feed, review this ordinance, review the PowerPoint, and send Mike our thoughts, concerns, thoughts, ideas, anything that we wanted to do in terms of reacting to it, which we've done. Also, the Citizens Communication Council of Radnor, which is a commission that deals specifically with these types of issues, did their own review of the ordinance and the PowerPoint, and Mike received that information from the Citizens Communications Council today. Mike gave us some feedback today on some of our comments, but we have more. Megan, thank you very much for your 10 points. They were prescient and, I think, very valuable to the process and led to, you know, are leading to a lot of discussion. We have also decided that because of the complexity of this item, we would like to have a special meeting as soon as possible just to deal with this issue. And I would hope that we would get members of the Citizens Communication Council to that meeting, since we're both going at this. So we're, the township staff has come up with some dates for us to review so we could set a date for a special meeting. I would, after we do that, I would like to table this discussion tonight. I feel like there's too much to absorb right now. I'm, Mike sent us some best practice information from townships that have, you know, taken on this wireless ordinance rewrite, and we haven't had a chance to digest that, so. We got them, yeah, we got that today. Thank you, Mike, for that. But I think our best use of time, frankly, is to, in the week or 10 days before the special meeting, absorb all the information. Mike can absorb what he's heard from us, and we'll have that meeting, and that's, that'll be the point of it, to, you know, to reach a, to keep chipping away at this process and make some, make some real progress. So, date-wise, is, how, Steve, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to, like, throw the dates out, or?
Sure, we have Monday, the 9th, but I'll defer to Mike if that gives him enough time to do what he needs to do. Thursday, the 12th, Tuesday, the 17th, or Thursday, the 19th, and they could all be evening meetings at 6:30, like, just like this one. So we don't, we're not going to be up against another meeting. So, again, not speaking for Mike, I don't know if that gives him enough time to do his work to send the commission, his work to, as you said, Matt, to digest, Mr. Chair? So I'll suggest the 12th, the 17th, or 19th for this committee?
I'm good for any of those days.
I'm not good for the 19th.
I think I'm good.
Well, I would try, but I have a situation on the 19th.
Megan, any of those dates work for you?
I could do it.
I can't do the 9th, but I could do the 9th or the 12th, but I can do the following week.
The 19th?
The 19th.
And Mike Roberts?
I'm available both the 17th and the 19th as well.
Why don't we, why don't we take a shot at the 19th? It seems like most of us can make that, and Skip, we can keep you in the loop if you can't.
Okay.
So I'd like to, at that point, unless someone, anyone else has any comments on where we stand on this, I'd like to suggest we make a motion to table.
I'd say there's no public comment.
I don't see any public comment. Oh, thank you for bringing that up, though, Skip. Steve, the special meeting will be televised, I assume?
Yes, sir. It'll be, the solicitor is going to prepare the advertisement. Trish will get that taken care of, and it'll be advertised, it'll be posted on the website, and it will be televised. It's another public meeting.
Okay, and, go ahead.
I just had a side conversation with Ian, and apparently, for free, quote-unquote, YouTube can broadcast on a live basis. I think that an increasing percentage of viewers may not have basic cable, so you can't see things on a live basis, you can't elect to come to the meeting if there's a whole bunch of people that showed up and you didn't know about it and things like that. The whole purpose of live is live. So, if that, I just want to make a recommendation from Skip, but maybe from all of us, that we immediately look into broadcasting live on YouTube if that's available, and it is supposedly going to Ian-free.
So, I will pass that on to the manager and the PIO and discuss with Ian, and we'll take it from there. Appreciate the suggestion.
Free is the best deal of the day here, you know.
Free is always good.
One other thing, Steve, we should think about, in some way, disseminating some of the things where, some of the information we're getting from Mike and some of the things we're asking Mike to answer to the, we should find a way to get this out to the public in some way to loop them in, because there's.
Mr. Chairman, what we can do, just like we have a packet for this meeting that gets posted, once Mr. Roberts is done and that is sent to you folks, just tell Trish or I what you want posted. If that's the draft, red line, amended ordinance, or whatever, we'll post that as the packet for the special meeting on the 19th. So however this commission wishes to do so.
Okay, that sounds great. So, is there a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Roberts, is, we haven't heard from you, and I didn't warn you that we were thinking about tabling this, so my apologies for, like, you know, chewing up your night or something possibly, but do you have any, anything, any comments? Do you need to say anything?
I think this is a sensible path forward. I only ask that, to the extent that there are any other comments or questions that the commission has beyond those that have been provided to me so far, that you send those my way so I can address everything in the next draft as well as respond to any questions.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll remind the rest of the PC and the Communications Council to get that, any information like that to you ASAP. Hey, Mike, when do you expect to turn the draft, next draft, over to us?
I'm looking at my schedule now. It should be, I'd like to get it to you by the 10th. That is next Tuesday, if that will work for you all.
So the 10th for meeting on the 19th, that's fine. Because I just want to make sure that we all have ample time to review it, considering the amount of information that's there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. So, is there a motion to table?
I make a motion that we table the discussion for the wireless compliance provision.
Second.
All in favor? Great, unanimous. Okay, next up on the agenda is, I think, preliminary final approval, King of Prussia, 250 King of Prussia Road. Welcome.
Good evening. Bob Tucker of Kaplan Stewart, representing the applicant. We're here this evening seeking your recommendation for approval of our plan to construct a parking garage at 250 King of Prussia Road. I have Joseph Trainor here to my right. He's going to set the table, and then we have our engineer is going to go through the review letters and answer any questions you might have, so I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, everyone. So, Alex and Matt are going to take you through some of the technical details. Some things have changed on the plan since we last presented to you in June, based on subsequent review with township engineers and consultants, as well as some feedback we had. We've been to Shade Tree Commission, some good feedback we've gotten from Shade Tree Commission, and subsequent approvals, along with a meeting with some of the neighbors across the street on Radnor Way. So we feel really good about the plan. Alex is going to take you through the details. A lot of, some of the waivers have been, have since been dropped that we were requesting on the plan in June, and then I know a lot of, there's a lot of questions around the traffic impact study, which Matt will be able to take you through. So, again, thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Alex and Matt.
Thank you. As noted, we'll just give a quick summary of where we were and where we are today. The engineer's letter is relatively simple. I'm going to review the waivers that still exist, but as noted, many of them have been removed in coordination with the Shade Tree discussions. And then I think the bulk of the conversation is about the traffic impact study that was the topic discussed most in June. As we recall, this is the existing center, as it sits today, with the existing 250 road and the existing surface parking, here with the main Loop Road with an access on King of Prussia and Radnor Chester Road, and then an access into our parking lot in two places along that Loop Road for main circulation, and then there's some existing extensions of the drive aisles along that Loop Road, which will be modified by our proposal. This, once again, is the proposed garage that goes over top of the existing parking field, and as we talked about, we maintained this circulation pattern through the site for the placement of the garage. The main change, actually, let me go back here. The main change from the last meeting, as far as waivers that were removed, if you remember, there was discussion about, most of the waivers related to landscaping. So, two of the changes were, we originally had requested some waivers related to parking lot landscaping for the surface parking lot. We agreed to install a central island here and add an additional tree, which eliminated the need for the 10 parking spaces in a row without a landscape island. So we were able to break this up and install that tree, so that removed that waiver request. And then also, in coordination with the Shade Tree Commission, we had originally asked for some relief for a partial waiver for the street tree requirements along King of Prussia and Radnor Chester Road. We have since removed that waiver request as well, and we're providing full compliant landscaping along both streets. The one thing to note, there was a change on the Shade Tree approval, was this shows four additional street trees along, basically between the building and Radnor Way, along Radnor Chester Road. Two of these will be changed to evergreen trees to provide all-year screening of the four-story portion of the building in coordination with the Shade Tree meeting. So those, that's not reflected on this rendering, but the latest landscape plan that Gannett's office has reviewed shows that request from the Shade Tree Commission. These are just some photos of the existing building, the rendering of the garage, the view with and without. And then this is the view of the expanded landscaping along the front edge. And as you can see, we have an evergreen tree, then a deciduous and an evergreen for some, some street trees where we get the benefit of both the shade trees, but then also the full year screening of the evergreens. And this is a view from Radnor Chester Road, or Radnor Chester Road from the Radnor Way properties. The other change that was made at the request of the Shade Tree and the residents is we planted one additional evergreen tree. You can barely see it in this view, but there's a tiny bit of the garage that does extend beyond the footprint of the building in the rear, so they asked for some additional landscaping to screen that area. So we have provided that as well. So those were all in the latest landscape plans that were subject of Roger's latest review letter.
How tall will the new trees be that you're going to, that you're going to want to install?
Well, they're being installed, I believe, at the standard six, seven-foot height, but they're green giant arborvitae, so they grow relatively quick and quite tall.
And the trees that are along King of Prussia Road that you're removing the waiver for, those, the existing or the current mature trees, they will stay?
Yeah, this is all supplementing. So we originally had tried to count the existing trees to meet our streetscape and then a waiver for everything remaining. So we're still keeping the existing trees, but then supplementing in additional areas to round out full compliance with the street tree.
Thank you.
So all the trees that are there today will stay, and then we're supplementing in any gaps. So we have a July 27th letter from Gannett, and I don't, I know last time we were here, there was a request, I think, to go through our response letter. We only have a response letter to the July 19th letter, which has been supplemented, so I don't know what letter you guys want us to, do you just want to review Gannett's latest letter? We don't need to go back to the 19th letter, correct?
Alex, I think that'd be fine.
So just going through that letter, the first four comments relate to the zoning variances that we've already received, so I think we've covered those in previous meetings, and those have since been granted. The remaining waivers that are still left is the groundwater recharge waiver. I believe in June, we talked about the stormwater requirements there. I can go into detail, but if memory serves, you guys were deferring that waiver request mostly to the board. So I'm prepared to discuss any questions you have, but if not, we can defer and discuss that directly with the board. A waiver to request preliminary and final land development is a single application, the standard 500-foot improvement for the survey limits. And then we still have two landscape waivers for the 10 continuous parking spaces in a row and the parking lot landscape requirements. But at this point, those are related solely to the footprint of the parking garage itself. All surface parking is compliant. We just need that within the garage, because obviously we can't have trees on the second level of a garage that are undercover. The zoning sections are all well-complies. The majority of those are more narrative in nature, just explaining some existing non-conformities and reciting the variances that were already granted. So there's no discussions necessary on those. Similarly, the subdivision and land development section, the first four, or the first three relate to the variant, or the waiver requests that we just discussed, and four relates to the calculation of the park and rec fee that we will work out with staff and the board. And then we get into sheet four, page four.
So Mr. Tweedy, I'm sorry, Mr. Tweedy, I don't mean to interrupt, but the applicant has agreed to pay that fee, correct, as you're going through there?
Correct, we're asking confirmation of the value, but yes.
Yes.
We removed the waiver request related to that and agreed to work out the fee with staff.
Is aware of that?
Correct. And then in stormwater, comments one and two are drafting items, so those are all well-complies. There's just some clarification requested on the details and within the report. And then number three relates to the need for submission of a grading permit after approval, which we will do as part of the standard course of action. And then the general comment just relates to the approval from the Shade Tree Commission on July 21st. So, other than the waivers that were requested, it is a well-comply for the Gannett letter. And then Matt will address Gilmore's letter related to the traffic study, and I can bring up.
And Alex, it, my memory of, since I'm on Shade Tree, was that you had a, you had pretty vibrant meetings with neighbors through this process.
Correct, yeah. Brandywine had met with Radnor Way residents, I believe, two times. And presented those, these graphics that we showed you were actually the presentation materials of that meeting, and those evolved through those meetings, and this is the final version that they agreed to. And our latest landscape plan was updated to reflect this agreed-upon condition.
Yeah, I didn't want that to get lost. And Roger, is there any stormwater, do, is it okay by you that the board takes the stormwater issue, not us?
Yeah, that's fine with me, however you want to proceed.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a little staff advice on that one.
So it's going to be the board's decision, Mr. Chairman? I mean, officially, the waiver request has to go to them. My suggestion is, Mr. Tweedy can explain it to the commissioners?
Thank you. Good evening. Matt Hammond with Traffic Planning and Design. As Mr. Trainor, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Tweedy had mentioned, I am here to discuss the traffic study and what has been done to date with respect to the traffic analysis. So, as you may or may not be familiar, we have prepared a traffic impact study. The original one was prepared back in May of this year and has subsequently been revised, resubmitted as of July 1st of this year. The traffic study focused on six intersections per discussions with township staff consultants. Those intersections are the intersection of King of Prussia Road and Matson Ford Road, King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road, King of Prussia Road and the Loop Road driveway serving the property, King of Prussia Road and Raider Way here, which was the subject of the MOB study that was done for 145 King of Prussia Road. We've also looked at Radnor Chester Road and the Loop Road driveway serving the property, as well as Radnor Chester Road and Raider Way. So basically, those six intersections encompassing the property. So, in order for us to determine the amount of traffic, the existing conditions, the traffic going through those intersections, it was a compilation of a number of different methodologies that we employed. Most of them due to COVID, most of those were, as a result of traffic volumes previously conducted, mainly from the 145 King of Prussia Road study. There was also some additional traffic volumes contained in a previous study that was completed a few years back for 240, 252, King of Prussia Road, and then also some traffic counts that we conducted on-site, mainly as it related to the intersection of 250, King of Prussia Road and the Loop Road and the Radnor Chester Road and the Loop Road. One of the main reasons why the traffic volumes from 145 King of Prussia Road study were utilized is because those traffic volumes included traffic associated with the existing property. It was at a time when 250 King of Prussia Road was actually in full operation, not only from the medical office portion, but also the office portion. I believe there was a couple users other than Mainline Health that were within the building. So we utilized those traffic counts, again, figuring that it would encompass, or give us the best view of how traffic was flowing through that area pre-COVID, and with the building being in full operation. We then, utilizing those volumes, we then looked at the driveways themselves, the two driveways of Loop Road, and then did some redistribution of traffic. And the reason we did the redistribution of traffic, because with the parking structure located in this area here, we felt that the likelihood was, is that you would probably see additional vehicles utilizing the King of Prussia Road access versus the Radnor Chester Road access. It's not to say that we're going to generate additional traffic. It's to say that we're reallocating some of the traffic that may have been at the Radnor Chester Road driveway to the King of Prussia Road driveway. Yes, sir?
I guess this seems like my favorite question. I keep asking it, but I'm, one additional detail. The 145 study, you said, kind of was during a time period when 250 was in active and full use?
Yes, sir.
Was the adjunct, or whatever it is, parking that they were leasing from an adjacent property owner still in use at that time?
Yes, sir.
For 250?
Yes.
Can you show that on the map?
Sure. So one of the main areas, and Joe, I know you're familiar with all the, I believe there's a bunch of locations, but go ahead.
So, to follow up on that question, to follow up on that question, when 250 was in active use, they were using that parking because that covenant to share parking was still in force because they hadn't transferred yet to Brandywine?
Correct. There was a parking license agreement, and that is, that was on the adjacent property here for roughly 40 spaces. Additionally, Penn Medicine licensed, or leased from us across the street at 201 King of Prussia Road, roughly 150 spaces over here as well, so.
So, let me run with this a little bit. Are the 150 spaces in use today by any one?
They are not, no.
They're not? They're vacant? They're just sitting there?
While they're, they're being used by the, they're part of the full count for the 201 property across the street, but they're not currently being used by any Penn Medicine employees.
I understand that. And the 40 spaces that were in the covenant, they're not in the covenant anymore across use? So.
Correct.
You lost 190 spaces.
Correct.
But those spaces are still in use, and they're not being plugged into the traffic calculus as being in use, even though they weren't in use by anybody other than Penn Medicine at the time of your studies?
I don't know if I fully follow you. What I can say is there was specific, maybe I can help you.
What I'm saying is, let's say Penn Medicine, I don't know the exact number, in, three years ago, was using 1,000 spaces, 240 of which were on other property. Now they're going to replace those 240 with a garage that's bigger than that, and the 240 is still in use by other people who may be able to use that parking. I'm just imagining that more total cars that are not in your traffic study are being accommodated on the 240 other spaces that are no longer being used by the 250 building.
So, let me answer that in two ways, and hopefully this will, this will address the question. One is that when the 145 study was done, they actually did trip generation counts of 250. So they looked at how many people were coming in and out of the facility in order to provide for a trip generation rate that they could utilize for 145. So they recorded how many people were in and out. I can't tell you 100% whether or not that encompassed the 40 and the 150, but they did use that information, collecting how many people were in and out, to determine the trip generation rate, which was subsequently used for 145 study, which was accepted by the township. So they did an actual trip generation calculation of the people in and have that building. Two, so, by having, by losing the 190 parking spaces, I don't know that I could say that they would be replaced. Obviously, those buildings, 201 and the adjacent building back here, have certain parking requirements that are necessary. I don't know that they would enter into any other agreements in the future with other users who lack parking, but I don't know, by virtue of the fact that we're taking those spaces away, that that would all of a sudden increase the amount of parking that was needed on those properties, if you follow me.
It doesn't increase it on those properties. It doesn't increase it on those properties, it increases it on 250.
Well, as I said, there was a specific trip generation, there was a specific section in the study.
And they're not part of this application, but I'm just wondering what happened to those 190 spaces? If that made it possible for different uses to be plugged into those other buildings that generated more parking need, then there's more traffic because they gave up the parking, or had to give up the parking in terms of the transfer to Brandywine. Just struck me that somehow, if the parking exists, there's a tendency to use it and...
Well, there has to be a reason for its use. I mean, obviously, that's an office building across the street, there's an office building behind the property.
Well, a lot of office parking lots are vacant right now, that's true.
So I guess what I would say is those, those office buildings, their parking requirements, they got to stand on their own from a parking perspective. So if they have to meet the township ordinances, and if they don't and they're deficient, then obviously that's an issue that those property owners have to deal with, which is what we're dealing with at this point. We're trying to accommodate not only the, the parking needs on the site, but also some of the off-site parking that, that we required back when the property was in full operation a few years back. So we are trying to improve...
I guess, yeah.
...an issue. I can't speak to those other properties, whether they would, you know, 201 would all of a sudden densify that building and require another, more parking, or have 190 people that need to park on that property. But I would say if those properties have met their requirements from a parking perspective, if they meet the ordinance requirements, then they can densify the building to the extent that they are able via the ordinance.
So if we don't have the traffic issue now, we may have it in the future, is a way of putting it?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I would say that I think from the purposes of 250 King of Prussia Road, I think we've accommodated the, accommodated for the traffic associated with the building. And I would say that we assumed the previous split of the use of the building, where it was 70% medical office and 30% office, we assumed that same percentage of split within the study, which in reality, it could be 60% medical office and 40% office. And if that were to be the case, and we're actually generating, we're showing that we're generating more traffic off of 250 King of Prussia Road, than we would if that split gets more weighted towards office versus medical office, as medical office is a higher traffic generator. I would say there's also growth built in, there's just general arbitrary growth built into traffic.
Yeah.
So when you look at existing conditions and then you look at the future conditions, you are just arbitrarily adding traffic on top of any known developments. So if you know there's a development coming in that would affect that study area intersection, you're going to include that. But then on top of that, you're just including arbitrary growth in traffic that, based on the amount of traffic out there, again, 190 parking spaces doesn't mean there's 190 people in all at the same time and leaving all at the same time in the afternoon. But again, I think, I don't necessarily correlate parking to traffic, because it's really, parking is a function of municipal ordinances, or traffic is a function of the use. And I'm sure you've had numerous applications that have come into pass that ask for reductions in the amount of parking that needs, because that's what they feel they need versus what the township feels that they should provide.
If I may chime in, because I think maybe to sort of more directly answer your question, Skip. I guess there's two pieces to it. There's the 40 spaces that were licensed from the neighboring property. We, Brandywine is not an owner of that property. I assume that they're, they took back those spaces for need for, for future tenancy, or just to get up to, to meet the parking demands of their, their current tenancy. 201, King of Prussia Road, those spaces were used on a temporary basis and actually were, over the course of the last couple of years, we flipped the, the Penn employees between that spot and the surface parking lot that you can see here, as they were going through the development of the new medical office building. So the intent was with the new medical office building that those 150 spaces were accommodated in their new garage here. And that was always on a short-term basis. So if, you know, tenant, tenant demand and tenant loads in 201 exceeded the, the parking spaces after we took away, after we gave spaces to Penn on a temporary basis, we moved them over to this parking lot as well. So I, I don't believe that we're, we're adding additional capacity for all of the properties. We're really just reallocating a need for this property and putting it, instead of spreading it throughout to adjacent properties. And really, the whole desire for us to do this is, as opposed to spreading the parking deficiency to adjacent properties, as was previously done through a number of, you know, licensed temporary spaces, they had a need to do valet parking and so forth, to actually solve the issue on the 250 King of Prussia Road property itself.
Okay.
And the one thing, last thing I'll add on that, and I won't beat a dead horse, but...
Go ahead.
I personally, from a traffic perspective, feel like by utilizing the pre-COVID volumes, that I've overestimated the amount of traffic. I think the business world has learned a number of lessons from COVID, and I'm sure everyone has experienced, had different experiences. There's going to be a significant increase in working from home, telecommuting. There is likely going to be slight decreases for a number of years in the traffic volumes from now moving forward versus what they were pre-COVID. I know my business, for instance, we're allowing a lot more of the employees to work from home, thereby reducing the amount of traffic on the road. And we're just one small company, but being that you are in a business area, an office area, a lot of those businesses will likely employ those same policies. And I'm not saying it won't at some point get back to those pre-COVID volumes. I think it's going to take some time and it's going to be a while before that happens. So, getting back to the traffic study, so we completed a traffic study, as I mentioned. We received some comments from the township traffic engineer, Gilmore and Associates. Oh, we went back, revised the study to provide some additional information. And again, the biggest takeaway from this is the fact that we reallocated some of the volume from the Radnor Chester Road driveway to the King of Prussia Road driveway, really, again, as a result of the proximity of the parking structure. So we did receive a review of the traffic study back on July 13th. I assume everyone has seen a copy of that from Gilmore. We did respond July 27th, and there was really, from the traffic study perspective, there was really four comments in there. Two of those comments really related to the ordinance requirement of a level of service C or better at intersections. Again, the main intersection here of 250 King of Prussia Road and the driveway degrades in the PM peak hour and does not comply with the ordinance requirement of level of service C. And again, that's a function of the fact that it's a very sensitive intersection, there's a high volume of traffic on King of Prussia Road, and the fact that we reallocated some of the volumes there. So what we did is we looked at, what was called a gap analysis, so we actually recorded the number of gaps on the road based on the, the data that we had, to determine how many gaps in traffic there were so we could calibrate the analysis, because the analysis always, the analysis is a computer model. It doesn't always take into account potential gaps in traffic. It assumes a constant platoon of traffic. So if there's 100 cars, or 60 cars in an hour, there's one car every minute and there's a gap between there. And we all know that that's not always the case. So, we did do a gap analysis there, and the gaps in traffic are in excess of what we project to turn left out of that driveway, which is the real issue, that the level of service degraded for the northbound left approach, or from the Loop Road, making a left on King of Prussia Road, there was a degradation in the level of service. We looked at possible mitigation measures, one of them being widening. Well, that approach already has two lanes, has a left and a right turn lane. Adding additional capacity to that intersection, when you have degradation in a, in a northbound left, does not do anything to improve the intersection operation.
Excuse me one sec, pardon me. Could you enlarge the map and show the planning commission exactly what you're talking about and where, when you go through the...
Sure.
...level of service items? Thank you.
Sure. So I'm talking about this intersection here, this is King of Prussia Road and the Loop Road, here's the subject property. So as I mentioned, there are currently two approach lanes, the King of Prussia Road, the degradation in the level of service occurs for anyone making a left out of the Loop Road on the King of Prussia Road. Again, prepared the gap analysis, also looked at potential improvements. As I mentioned, the widening of the road, typically something you look at, the widening of the Loop Road would not solve the issue. We then went to the possibility of signalization. Based on the proximity of the existing signal at Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road and the driveway, which is about 400 or so feet, we would not meet the PENDOT requirements. PENDOT typically wants to see 1,000 feet of separation. However, I had been involved in a number of projects where we've gotten it down to 600 or 650 feet, but I don't believe at this distance that PENDOT would approve the signal. Furthermore, I don't know that we meet the, or we don't meet the warrants for a traffic signal beyond the peak hours of traffic. Technically, when PENDOT looks at whether a traffic signal should be provided, they want you to meet as many of the warrants as possible, and a peak hour warrant is not a warrant that would justify a traffic signal. So again, based on the fact that couldn't put a traffic signal in there, and based on the fact that we have sufficient gaps, we think it's actually going to operate fairly efficiently in the future. And on top of that, I would point out that if any queuing does occur, it would occur onsite, it would occur within this Loop Road, and vehicles still have the ability to utilize the Radnor Chester Road driveway.
Matt, can you, can you describe for us how the traffic worked inside this, this property before and how it's going to work now? Like, can you do that in a visceral way, to give us an idea of like internally, what is the traffic going to be like? And, and also like what, with the uses that are going on there, is it going to be like a rush hour situation, or is it going to be more coming and going throughout the day?
Well, I think with, and it's a great question. Let me answer the second part first. I think based on the use, you're going to see typically an office portion of it, you're going to see a larger portion of the vehicles entering during a certain time period in the morning, and it may not be over an hour. It really depends on the employer, whether they employ flex time. You're going to see more of a concentration for the office component during the morning entering, and then conversely, in the evening, you're going to see a larger portion leaving around the same time. For the medical office use, you're going to see traffic sporadic, or, or spread out throughout the course of the day based on appointments, duration of appointments, services, things of that nature. So, it's not that everything's going to be concentrated in the AM and everything's going to be concentrated in the PM hour. Will be slight concentrations during those peaks, but again, most of the medical office portion will be spread out throughout the day, you know, again, depending on appointments and depending on the services provided.
That aspect in relation to how 250 King of Prussia Road did business when it was up and running before...
Is exactly the same.
Is exactly the same.
Exactly the same, correct. In terms of how the site's going to operate, there are a, and I don't know if we have, you'll see, and it's kind of somewhat difficult to see, but this is the existing surface parking area on the east side of the property. And this is the Loop Road that serves 250 King of Prussia Road. There are a number of access points that connect to that Loop Road to serve the, the existing surface slot, as well as another connection here, I'm pointing to closer to Radnor Chester Road. When the parking structure is completed, two of those, I believe it's two, two of those access points that currently access, directly access, the Loop Road will be eliminated and will be down to three access points serving internally. Two of those will be in the proximity of the parking structure, and then this one here will remain. So we're really reducing two access points on the Loop Road from five down to three as part of the, the site. There will be an access into the garage in this location here, and access in this location here for surface parking, again, eliminating some of these access points that exist along the Loop Road today.
But how will that, oh, so how will that change internally on the Loop Road affect Radnor Chester Road ingress and egress, and King of Prussia Road ingress and egress? Will it be the impact, because that change must make a difference, right?
Sure. And that's, and that's what I was, I was mentioning earlier in the traffic study. So, what we tried to do is, based on the proximity of the parking structure in this location, we assumed that because it was there, that we may see more traffic, a desire to enter and exit the site utilizing the King of Prussia Road driveway than was in the past. And thereby, because we're not increasing the amount of traffic for the use based on its previous operation, there would be less traffic utilizing Radnor Chester Road Loop Road driveway. So we assumed more coming in and out of King of Prussia Road and less coming in and out of Radnor Chester Road driveway, by virtue of the fact that the structure is here. Now that's, to me, again, conservative approach based on its location, but it does lessen the impact at Radnor Chester Road, but does increase the impact at King of Prussia Road. Yes, sir?
The, the issue that I see is on Radnor Chester Road, if you are, if you are coming into your property off Radnor Chester Road, going, I guess, was it south, to take that, make that left-hand turn into your parking lot, that's where I see the bottleneck, particularly like later in the afternoon. So I'm just wondering if you could, if you guys have explored the ideas of just having one way, just ingress and or egress, one or the other coming out of the property? So you cannot have ingress off of Radnor Chester Road on your property, the ingress would, would be off of King of Prussia Road.
So I can tell you, we have not explored that. I think having two access points that serve as both ingress and egress is important for this facility, otherwise you're concentrating all egress to one access point. That, that will back up traffic internally and that could cause additional delays on the main line when people are trying to get out. I would say that in terms of your observations in the PM peak hour and it being stacked up...
That's...
That's usually when the vehicles for this type of use are exiting in the PM. So they're leaving the driveway versus coming in. I'm not here to say that there's not people coming in for an appointment later on or coming into the office later in the afternoon, but you're going to see the influx, the, the people coming into the site in the morning and the people leaving the site in the afternoon.
Well, it's, it's the same thing, you know, I was just looking at off of Rhett on King of Prussia Road. So around, you know, I'm very familiar with King of Prussia Road, even for, for decades, when the old Wythe building was there, that road was always backed up from 415 all the way to about 545.
Right.
For, since the 70s. So if you're still going to be making, trying to make a left hand, coming out of your property, trying to make a left-hand turn onto King of Prussia Road, you're going to have a bottleneck. And so my thought would be, right there, we have a big circle, why not have it just basically one direction going, you know, if, to basically push the traffic down by the high school on King of Prussia Road, I think just one egress there. You may only, you only make one right-hand turn, rather than trying to make a left-hand turn onto King of Prussia Road and go towards King of Prussia.
Well, again, I, I think if you're, if you're forcing all the vehicles to enter one driveway or exit the other driveway and forcing them to make a certain maneuver, I think you're going to end up causing more harm in terms of the operations of this area. As we get further in, in the review letter, you'll notice that there are level of service degradations as you go further down, down the, down King of Prussia Road.
But the sta, the stacking, I mean unfortunately, the stacking is going to be on your property, it's not going to be...
Correct. But, but again, we're, we're anticipating a stacking to occur during the PM peak hour for vehicles exiting out into King of Prussia Road. However, once people come to the site, if they're doctor that they go see on a regular basis, they're going to learn that maybe that's a little more difficult to get on King of Prussia Road, and they still have the ability to shoot out the back on Radnor Chester.
Understood. I, I just think the, the reality, from what my experience is on King of Prussia Road, it is going, no matter, however you design it, and no matter what analysis that you do, that road, once we get through this pandemic, and I agree, I guess it was the earlier comments that, you know, yes, there are going to have some remote working and, you know, there's going to be some relief, but come 415, come 430, especially when you have sports going on at the school and the buses coming off that road, it's going to be completely backed up, one way or the other.
And I don't disagree, there'll be times when there's, there's heavy volumes in this area, once we get back to what I'll call normal. I will tell you... I will tell you that as part of 145, they have agreed and have provided what's called a traffic adaptive system, if everyone's familiar with the traffic adaptive system. So they have proposed that, I believe. The equipment is in, it just hasn't been turned on as they're calibrating everything, collecting all the data in order for them to turn it on. Traffic adaptive systems are very difficult to model, just because they're adaptive, they change all the time. But studies have shown pre and post that there is a 20 to almost 30% increase in efficiency and decrease or an improvement in level of service. So again, I'm not here to say that that traffic adaptive system's going to solve all the issues. It's not. It's not all of a sudden, there's going to be no backups during the peak hours. There will at certain times, but it's going to help the traffic flow. It's a matter of, the problem is, is that it's very difficult to do the improvements that are necessary to completely alleviate those issues.
Understood. I, I'm just, as I said, I'm just looking at this and just trying, knowing with what I know and knowing what I know about commercial office buildings, just kind of playing around in my mind at least, of what is the best way to alleviate.
I would, I would rather give them more opportu, more options for entrance and exit depending on the certain time periods than to, than to hamstring them to say, you can only come in Radnor Chester Road, you can only exit King of Prussia Road, or vice versa. Because then you will have people taking more chances. If there's a stack up of 20 cars waiting to get out in the peak hour, because it's the only access that they have, people will start to take chances.
Historically, again, since the 1970s, my, my father worked at the old Wythe Building, so I know this very, very well.
Okay.
They used to have police officers. What's that?
Did he have trouble getting out?
Absolutely. So they used to have Radnor police officers at two locations, basically directing traffic from like 4:30 or 4:15 down through about 5 o'clock, 5:30 every single day, particularly in the fall. Fall was always really bad. So I, I just think, once we get through the pandemic, I think, no matter what, this is something that as you continue to figure out your designs, this is something that, that's going to be everyone's reality.
Yeah, I think it's going to continue to evolve over time, whether it's, you know, any other redevelopment in the area or any other potential improvements. Like I said, I, the, the real fix here, and we'll get into this in the next comment in the review letter, the real fix is something that virtually can't be accomplished at this point.
And the, the other thing that I remember even with the earlier discussions with PennMed, I think a lot of the traffic is going to come down with Raider Road as a cut through to Radnor Chester Road.
Come down Raider Road?
Come down Raider Road.
Through the school?
Through the school. And that's something I think that as a, either the school district and/or the township should think about doing, that where it's going to prevent people from using that as a cut through.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. I agree.
So.
Okay, so I guess with that said, I'll move on to the next comment in the letter, which again pertains to the level of service C in the ordinance requirement. I would point out that of the intersections that are of issue in terms of, I keep doing this, sorry, in terms of the level of service. Just get a moment here. The main intersections I'll concentrate on first, the intersection of Radnor Chester Road, King of Prussia Road, and Matson Ford at King of Prussia Road. I would point out that they currently operate below a level of service C. Let me get that box out of here. They currently operate below a level of service C, and so we looked at, as required, looked at what improvements would be necessary in order to bring them up to a level of service C. And really, I would say the two main improvements are widening.
What is service C?
Sure. So, it's a great question, because there are, as a traffic engineer, the riveting world that we live in, we grade intersections how they operate. Level of service A being the best, level of service F failing, just like grades in school. Level of service C is a very good level of service. I mean, you may look at it, grade and say, ah, you're a C student, but a C is actually a very good level of service for this area. To put it in context, PennDOT's design level of service for this type of area is a level of service D as a dog. Basically, you're just passing. That is their design level of service. That's what they hope to achieve when they, when they provide for their improvements along the roadways. So a level of service C is a very good level of service for this area. So the ordinance requires that any intersection operates a level of service C or below a level of service C, that it be mitigated or improvements be identified in order to bring it to a level of service C or better. And a level of service is really just a function of delay, how long it takes you to get through an intersection. The longer it takes, the worse the level of services. So in order to meet the ordinance requirement, we would need to widen along King of Prussia Road to provide for two lanes in each direction. You'd also need to widen on Matson Ford Road, approaching King of Prussia Road to provide for dual left turn lanes. You'd also need to widen on Radnor Chester Road to provide for dual left turn lanes. And then obviously, when you add dual left turn lanes here and two lanes here, you would have to make some modifications to the driveway. Unfortunately, based on the Septa Rail Bridge and some other of the constraints to this area, providing two lanes through this area is impossible at this point. Until such time as that Septa Rail Bridge is widened and you can actually accomplish that, then it may be a little bit more feasible, but you do have some buildings that exist close proximity to the road, you have some grades, you have some other issues to deal with. Those aren't issues that you can't overcome. The biggest issue right now is the widening of the Septa Rail Bridge.
You know, that's the perpetual elephant in the room. Does anybody have a sense of the cost? And is it a question of cost or is it a question of bureaucratic red tape with Amtrak, et cetera?
I would say both. It's my experience. I haven't investigated this aspect. I have, I have been involved in this type of situation before, and it's part of bureaucratic red tape as well as cost at the end of the day. You're going to have to keep, the bare minimum, you have to keep that rail line open, right? Constantly, constantly in operation. So you have to figure out a way that you can widen underneath that while keeping that constantly open. You figure it out. It's a cost, you know, it's, it's really, it comes down to money. It's getting everyone to approve, and by everyone, I mean.
Now, there's an infrastructure bill coming, maybe. But, you know, I, I lived through something like this. The turnpike was widened from two to three lanes in each direction, and the overpass at Henderson Road was enlarged and it was all just done. I mean, it was.
Yeah, but that was, that was a 10-year process, design process and going through.
Well, if we never start, we never start, I guess.
Agreed. Agreed. But it's, it's, it's a significant cost at the end of the day, not only to design it, but to actually provide for that widening of just the rail overpass versus the widening through that area for two lanes.
It wasn't just widening, they actually made the Henderson Road wider underneath the turnpike as well. So the, the overpass was enlarged both dimensions.
Yes, I, I don't know, I knew that we would at least need to widen it in order to get additional lanes underneath it. I don't know if we need to widen it.
This, this comes up every time. Too bad we don't have a development fee for the district there that, you know, you start contributing and eventually we could widen the bridge opening. All right.
We also, from a level of service perspective, and this is only during the AM peak hour, we don't meet the level of service C criteria is at the intersection of Raider Road and Radnor Chester Road as I'm pointing to here. In order for you to meet the level of service C criteria, you'd need to widen along this field, the frontage here on Radnor Chester Road to provide for a 250-foot right turn At King of Prussia Road and Raider Road, again, I keep doing this, sorry, which it, which is obviously subject to, which is a subject of 145 King of Prussia Road, there is a degradation, not degradation, but there's, that intersection does not meet the level of service C criteria, and that was spelled out in the 145 study. The only way to improve the level of service in order to get a level of service C or better, you need to widen along this field here for a right turn lane onto Raider Road. And I believe, again, you would need to carry that two-lane cross-section, that additional lane further up King of Prussia Road. If you're familiar with the improvements that were done, they did widen on the south side of the intersection. That inside lane dies as a right turn lane into the site. You would need to carry that widening along King of Prussia Road to provide for that constant two-lane northbound, we'll call it northbound or westbound, all the way up through to Matson Ford Road. And then the only other one was obviously the King of Prussia Road, 252 Loop Road driveway, which again, I, I talked about earlier, that was part of the initial, initial comment. And as I mentioned again, these intersections are all included within the traffic adaptive system. 145 provided for 13 intersections to be traffic adaptive. So again, based on what they're supposed to do and what they have been shown to do, there should be an improvement in the operation and reduction in level of service. So it may end up changing once it's, that's fully functional and traffic flow starts to pick up, that may change because it is adaptive. So some of these issues from a level of service perspective may not be as much of an issue or an issue at all once that happens. The next comment talked about the access points to the Loop Road at 250 and Radnor Chester There are, talked about the fact that based on the traffic study that was done in the analysis, that right turn lanes off of King of Prussia Road and a right turn lane off of Radnor Chester Road are warranted. I would say that those lanes exist, however, they're not striped or signed. So they're not really, when you're pulling up, you see that you have the width to make that right turn, but it's not technically a dedicated right turn, so we have agreed to stripe and sign those right turns so that they're proper right turn deceleration lanes. The next comment talked about the parking spaces within the structure and the size of those spaces. That's a will comply. The site plan, the architectural floor plans have been revised to show the required stall dimensions. And then there were five general comments. The first one talked about the parking will be improved from existing conditions, but the total required spaces will still not be met. Our response is that the project proposes an improvement to an existing nonconformity, therefore variance would not be required. Provide additional signage and pavement markings, clearance height signage should be also be provided. Again, the architectural floor plan has been revised to include additional shining, striping, and clearance height signage. Next comment talked about construction notes. That's a will comply. Next one talked about a detail for typical parking spaces as well as agor area striping. That's a will comply. And then the final comment talked about reverse the direction of the agor area striping adjacent to the northern garage entrance, and that's a will comply. That's been revised. So those are the comments, the latest comment letter that we received from the township traffic engineer. So this is, this is really a kind of a summary of the levels of service and where we, and what I was talking about, the level of service C and meeting the requirements. You'll notice what these tables show is this table right here on the left-hand side is the weekday AM peak hour, and that's typically the one highest hour of traffic between 7:00 to 9:00 AM. So it could be 7:00 to 8:00, it could be 7:15 to 8:15. And then the, the table on the left, I'm sorry, on the right is the PM peak hour level of service. Just move it down. So weekday PM peak hour. And we have a comment here says meet LOS requirements. And what that means is, as I mentioned before, there's certain requirements, and normally when we prepare traffic studies, we look at the PennDOT criteria with respect to levels of service, and what PennDOT says is you should, you, you need to mitigate the impact of your development, and this is a little bit of a different situation because the development existed at the time when the counts were conducted, and all we're really doing is reallocating some of that traffic from one ac, access point to another. But PennDOT says you need to mitigate the impact, or you cannot degrade the level of service more than 10 seconds. So what you'll see here is actually, for all intents and purposes, when you compare base conditions and projected, and what that means, the base conditions are assuming the parking structure was not in place, everything was status quo, and traffic was flowing through King of Prussia Road, Radnor Chester Road, through the study area, and 250 King of Prussia Road was in operation. Projected conditions assumes the parking structure's in place and the, the traffic is redistributed based on that. And when I talk about the level of service requirements, and I talk about degradations or I talk about mitigations, I'm really looking at comparing the base conditions to the projected conditions, because the difference between the two is really the impact the development has. And you'll notice that, you know, there's an improvement at the King of Prussia Road, Radnor Chester Road office park driveway. That's due to mostly for the traffic adaptive system through that area and the fact that we've reallocated some volumes. So when we take volumes, if we move volumes from King of Prussia Road away from Radnor Chester Road driveway, you've added lefts onto King of Prussia Road and then through the intersection versus rights from King of Prussia Road to Radnor Chester Road and then lefts back out. Lefts always cause the biggest delay at intersections when you have a number of left turn vehicles. But you'll notice that there's really virtually no difference between with and without for most of these intersections, again, due to the fact that a lot of this was already assumed within the 145 traffic study. You will notice here, again, this intersection here, this is the King of Prussia Road, 250 Loop Road driveway, and that's where you have that level of service D, which I talked about before. Again, by reallocating the traffic, redistributing the traffic, there is a decrease in the operation. It is a sensitive intersection, but it is a, a level of service D as a dog, which again, if this was a PennDOT road, that would meet PennDOT criteria, but obviously the township has their ordinance in place for level of service C, and we are at a level of service And I, and I would add, I would suspect that these projected levels of service through this area here, through these columns, will likely be better than what's shown on this, on these columns, just again, by virtue of the traffic adaptive system. It's very hard to model because it changes. More traffic comes one approach, it reallocates green time there, and it could be every single cycle. You know, every time the light turns green, it could have additional seconds in one approach or less time in the other approach. So it's really changing, adapting to the volumes through the areas.
Did you guys, did you consider at all having more than two points of going in and coming out?
We did not. Now, there is, there is a small, there is a driveway up this area here on King of Prussia Road that services that small parking lot, but we did not look at any additional access points. It gets, on one hand, you want to provide sufficient access to give people options. On the other hand, you don't want to provide too much access. And I know that, you know, a lot of my clients would yell at me for saying that, but the reality is the more access points that you, that you propose or you include on the roadway, the more potential conflicts that you have. So it's got to be that balancing act of how many is too many, how many is not enough. I think this facility operated for many years with the two access points. It's going to continue to operate the same fashion, and quite frankly, I think there's actually going to be some less traffic in and out of that facility, and that's due to the fact that there wasn't sufficient parking, and there was times when people entered the site, couldn't find parking, and then had to park remotely. So if we can have everyone park onsite, we don't have those people entering the Radnor Chester Road driveway, looking for parking, can't find anything, exiting out in the King of Prussia Road, circling around the block. That issue would be eliminated due to the, to the parking garage. So while I can't quantify that, I mean, that's a reality. And again, not having, not only the vehicles parked across the street and having additional movements at those driveways, it's the pedestrians. You know, you park on the other side of King of Prussia Road, someone's got to walk across to the facility. Having all the parking onsite eliminates that as well.
Another thing I noticed that sometimes that helps me is I see smart information on highways and where something will say six minutes to I-76. on highways, and where something will say six minutes to I-76, six miles, six minutes. Have, is, was there any consideration to giving people who are inside the facility and leaving, an idea of where the congestion is? Like, if you, can you tell? Can you, could you pro, could you telegraph that to somebody electronically through a smart system, that they could say, just don't go out on King of Prussia Road, because it's not going to be fun? So, it's like...
So, that's done on roadways. Obviously, everyone's experienced that. But those roadways are usually experiencing significant volumes where it's predictable, right? So, if there's a congestion on I-476, that's because there's 20,000 vehicles traveling down through that road over the course of a couple hours. So, it's easy to predict, don't go this way, use the alternate route, congestion ahead, you know, it's five miles, it's going to take you 25 minutes. This, in this instance, there's going to be, there's not enough traffic that, that by the time you may alert somebody, there may not be an issue, right, at that driveway? Don't go to King of Prussia Road driveway because it's congested, go to Radnor Chester Road. That could be resolved in two minutes.
And as Dave says, you just know you're going to get hammered twice a day.
And there's, and the people that go there frequently, I mean, obviously, the person that's going there for the first time is going to learn. But the people that go there frequently for, whether they work there, or the people that are going there for doctor visits every month, every six months, whatever it may be, they're going to know at certain times, just like with any other use. You know, you know, if you frequent a site on a congested roadway, you know that, okay, maybe I don't go at 3:00, or maybe I use this driveway, because it's going to be easier for me to get out. I may have to loop around. But I would say the other thing that we have agreed to provide, and it wasn't included in this letter, was included in a subsequent letter, was some signage, some wayfinding signage on site to help direct people to the access points, to make it a little bit easier for them to know Radnor Chester Road driveway. Because they may, some people may come to this site every day, not every day, but frequently, and utilize the King of Prussia Road driveway, never knowing, you just loop around, you can get out the Radnor Chester Road. So, we have agreed to provide signage on site as well to help that.
Yeah, I mean, part of, I mean, I can speak for Skip, because we were, we were both on for 145. We were both on this commission. I don't want to speak for Elaine and Dave, but it seems like this is the type of thing where we're just like, we're taking the pill, you know? It's like, we hear your report, you know, it's, it's, you're saying there's going to be less traffic, less volume, I think is how I interpret the major headline, right? Like...
I don't, I don't think there's going to be any less volume. I mean, I, I think, the study doesn't say there's going to be less volume. I personally believe there will be less volume, but we took the conservative approach and assumed that, forget about COVID, forget about work from home, forget about less trips in and out of the driveways as you're searching for parking. Those are, those are all anecdotal is not the right word, but those are all opinions that I can't substantiate. So, other than me saying them and seeing them being reality, it's not anything that we quantified in the study. We assumed the volumes were what the volumes were, the pre-COVID volumes are the amount of traffic that's going to be on the roadway, the amount of traffic in and out of driveways is the same, the split of the use on the property is the same. So, we've assumed, we tried to be conservative in that regard.
Yeah. I mean, so, it seemed to me in my reading of the interaction between Damon and you guys, he pointed out one, the most onerous issue was that intersection at King of Prussia.
Mm-hmm.
And Damon, like, where, where are you? I mean, where's your head on this? Because, like, it doesn't seem like that's fixed in this, it doesn't seem like the fix is put on this thing. But...
So, to me, that...
You know, I don't know enough about this stuff. So, like...
To me, it's going to operate similar to existing conditions where, and also similar to other developments along King of Prussia Road, where you have a whole lot of volume of King of Prussia Road, and it's difficult to get out. I think a lot of the accesses on King of Prussia Road are actually at level of service D or better, or worse, at a lot of the properties. This property is unique, and the case, in the case it's on a corner, it does have that option to get out onto Radnor Chester Road. If you're seeing queues come out on, on King of Prussia Road, you may see that queue and say, oh, let me go out the other way, where you have access, you can make a right turn, and then you have access to the light at King of Prussia and Radnor Chester Road. I don't believe there's other improvements that they can do that would be feasible in this case. What they're providing, and the improvements they are providing, are the additional right turns, or striping the right turns. I think that is reasonable, based on their impact in just basically three intersections, which are their two accesses, and redistribution of traffic, a little bit of traffic at Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road. The three other intersections, I believe that they studied, there was no additional traffic impact at those intersections. So...
So, so if I'm hearing you right, you're, if I said you would recommend approval based on your interaction with the group and your analysis of what exists and what can be changed and what can't be changed, and...
I can't recommend approval to the board in that manner, because you're guys, but I would say, from a traffic standpoint, I would deem that, or find this acceptable.
I mean, it just seems like we're stuck with a, we're going to be stuck with traffic.
I think, no matter what you do, there is going to be traffic on that road. It is what it is. And I don't think there's anything that you can do until, as you had suggested, where you're able to widen that bridge or address that bridge to get out of the bottleneck. That is, that is an issue.
No, no, you, no, you did. I was just figuring out how Damon could be elected to the planning commission. But no, I, no, there was nothing further. And again, I would point out that, based on that table, that that intersection, the subject intersection, the issue occurs in the PM peak hour. It occurs for the left turn movement. And if it were a PennDOT road, whether this means anything or not, it's a level of service D as in dog. So, it's not failing, still meets that criteria, it just doesn't meet the township's ordinance criteria.
Would it be easier to meet the criteria if you agreed as a developer or the applicant to change the ratio of medical to office by 60/40, or 50/50?
So, I don't know, so, obviously, I can't answer that. I don't know that, I really think at the end of the day, the market's going to dictate the split. I think at a worst case, we're assuming it's going to be 70/30. It's likely impossible that it would be less than, you know, might be 65/35. I would tell you that for every, for every 10,000 square foot difference, you know, if you take 10,000 square feet away of medical office use and make it 10,000 square feet of office use, that reduces the traffic in and out of the facility by 5%. So, if you got it down to, I forget what the split is. So, if we're at 70/30, and you took it down to 64/36, you can reduce the traffic by 5% in and out of the facility. But again, I think the market's going to dictate it, and I think the hope is that there'll be a greater use of the office space versus the medical office. But I think there's a lot of other things that play into that, you know, from a traffic perspective, that I think, I think we've tried to be conservative. I think Damon's given us a lot of great feedback and a lot of great direction in terms of how to proceed with the traffic study. But I, at the same time, our job is to try to be as conservative as possible, in hopes that we are, and in the future, there's less congestion, less traffic than what we're predicting.
Is there any other staff comment?
Mr. Chairman, just, I don't, I don't know if the board, if it pleases the board to make a recommendation, whether that, whatever, whatever that recommendation is. But a couple things to consider. The applicant's requesting preliminary final. So, when you do make your recommendation one way or the other, I would request that you address that, whether you recommend this go through as preliminary file, final, or just as a preliminary approval. And we went through Roger's letter, we've gone through Damon's letter, you've heard what our traffic consultant has stated. So, it's up to, if it so pleases the commission, to talk further about traffic. But that's the one, those two things are, I request you be very specific about when you make your recommendation one way or the other.
Yeah, Steve, is there a reason why we wouldn't, is there something that would hold back final approval? In terms of like, have, they're, they're not going, their, their next step is the board, right?
So, that our ordinance doesn't have preliminary final. So, when anybody ever asks for it, it's a waiver right off the bat. I think some projects may lend itself to that, less complicated projects. I think others, I would come right out and suggest that you move forward with preliminary, and then final. If the planning commission feels we've reached everything we have to reach on this, then it's your call on the preliminary final. I don't know what more we're going to do again if they come back.
Well, I mean, from my, where I'm sitting, we, it seems like everything except traffic is pretty clear now. And it seems like it passes muster. I think the garage is a good idea. You know, I, I don't, I don't have any problems with that. The traffic is, we're just not fixing it. You know, it's, it'd be great to be able to fix it, but we're not, there's no way to fix it. So, it's like, what we're confronted with is, do we want, do we want to recommend that this project not go forward, because we can't fix the traffic, because we can't fix the traffic? So, it's like, I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I could see, I could see giving them preliminary approval in order that the board gets it, and, you know, we haven't done the final approval, but that may just be an unnecessary step. I don't know. How do other people feel? I don't see anything. So, I, Steve, I'm, I'm thinking...
Public comment?
Yeah, okay. Is there any public comment? All right. I'm of a mind to grant preliminary and final approval. I agree.
Second.
Call on favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can't just penalize them. You can't just penalize them.
No matter, no matter what.
The bridge.
Yeah, it's a problem. Yeah, you could do that. Solve the water problem. Because the electric lines are pretty high.
So, next up is Eagle Road. We are pulling the zoning amendment, we're tabling that, because we already approved the zoning change.
I don't believe it should be on the agenda.
It is not anymore.
Except being tabled, I think it should be removed from the agenda.
All your public comments, if you're going to get any public comments, I think, again...
How are you doing?
Doing fine. Good evening.
John Snyder, I'm here for Dave Falcone, who's enjoying the mountains of New York. You recommended preliminary final approval, preliminary approval at the last couple of months ago, but we needed zoning relief. We've received the zoning relief. As a result of the zoning relief, and our extended efforts with our neighbors, we have revised the plan downward from 20 to 18 units. We think we have a plan that is going to be very easy to approve, since you were, recommend approval, since you were here before, with the plan that was two more units. And so, we have review letters. I'm going to let Rob go through the review letters with you if you desire, but otherwise, I think this should be a pretty quick evening.
Yeah, I believe the steep slopes issue is the only reason you're back, and, and that's why you had to go back to Shade Tree as well, so...
We've been back to Shade Tree, and as I said, due to the relief we received and the discussions with the neighbors, we're down to 18 instead of 20 units, and we think it's a great plan, and hope you do too.
Good evening, Rob Lambert. We've presented this many times, but I think this is the, one of the first times we've actually done it live. I was trying to get rid of this shared application. I'm sorry about the orange block. I'm not sure how to get rid of that one. But I have two slides to share tonight. The first one, this was the original plan that you recommended preliminary approval on. This was showing 20 houses. For reference, Radnor Street Road is along the bottom of the page, left to right. On the right-hand side is Walnut, going top to bottom. And so, the second page, and if I flip back real fast, you probably don't see too much of a difference in the two plans. But this is an 18-unit plan. This is the plan we went back. We received zoning approval to disturb the slopes around the parking area. And this plan represents a culmination of working with the township, the neighbors, and the zoning hearing board. And so, this proposes 18 units. We do have the review letters. They're really all will comply. I'm happy to go through them individually, but I don't know if there's a reason to tonight.
I, I don't believe there is a reason to go through this. I, we approved this plan, and it changed, and that's all we needed to see was the changes. I think the biggest impact was on trees, and the Shade Tree Commission worked through that and vetted that, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, we would ask, though, that you recommend it as a preliminary final.
Correct.
You know, any issues, any issues with the board can be discussed with the board.
That's what we're...
But from your standpoint, I think that you don't need to see it back again.
I totally agree with you. Is there any public comment, by the way?
I think that's a tribute to how well we've worked with the neighbors.
My name is Patty Conlin. I live at Radnor Street Road, catty corner to this property. I've been in conversations with Devon, who works for Concordia for the last year and a half. This is the best/worst alternative sort of plan. It's, obviously, we would love to stay at mostly grassy field and such, but we understand that Eastern does need to sell it, and they have worked with us in terms of this. And we're really looking forward to getting the township, I think it's later on the agenda item, adding the path to Fenimore Woods. That is one, one critical item. But overall, I've coordinated with about 25 immediate neighbors and such. So, that's it.
So, do we have a motion to, or any discussion here at this level? Fenimore Woods is down...
Off to the upper right. So, it goes, if you continued up Walnut, it goes up, it probably sits right about up here.
So, does anyone want to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for preliminary and final approval of the development.
Call on favor? Call in favor? Unanimous? Very good.
Yeah, you already, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but did you make a recommendation on the waivers at the last meeting? And if not, would you make one now? I mean, that's a separate question, is the only reason why. There were two waivers.
The, the only additional waiver, you did preliminary final, so the two waivers we were requesting was the waiver of preliminary, to do preliminary final.
Right.
And the second one was the manmade features within 500 feet of the site, which is a standard.
That's fine.
Yes. Yeah. It's showing manmade features within 500 feet of the site on the plan. And, you know, I think you just need a motion to recommend that to the board.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for the 500-foot requirement of manmade features on the plan.
Call in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we are adjourned. Oh, yes, so the special meeting will be August 19th at 6:30. Megan, everything okay there?
Yeah, I'm just putting it in my calendar.
Great.
I won't forget.
Great.
This was good, thanks, thanks for accommodating my last minute request. I...
Oh, thanks for doing it, because otherwise we don't have a meeting.
I'm just crossing my fingers that the kids go back to school, so I'm doing everything I can.
Great.
All right.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Roberta Winters. I live at 326 Williams Road in Rosemont, and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm sorry I was out in the hall. I want to thank you for the service you provide to Radnor Township. I know you have a lot of difficult decisions, which you deal with each meeting as our township continues to evolve. Based on what I observed at the July meeting, I would like to make the following suggestions. Please check petitions to determine if in fact they represent homeowners. Verify statements about the parking of cars on the property of others. Follow your instincts when it comes to separating diverse issues, seeking presentations, and doing side-by-side comparisons when issues of discrimination are voiced. Use caution when you impose regulations from one part of the township on another part of the township when settings are markedly different. Be aware that different rules may apply to properties along state roads than on municipal streets. Try to avoid decision-making during the summer when distractions impact those who may be potentially impacted. And realize that COVID times are not optimum for wide-scale community input, for parking and traffic studies, or even the impact of students in different neighborhoods. Consider that seeing is believing. Documents, maps, and computer views can present alternative views of reality. In closing, I really appreciate the time and energy you spend on behalf of our community. I encourage you to trust, but verify, as you continue in your important role. Thank you.
Take care, you too.